Right in the building or?
We can miss her for a moment.
I'm sure Chris did not.
Yeah.
That would be worth filming. What's the official time in here?
Six fifty-nine.
What's this code for the contact cell? Oh, cell. Yeah, I read the art line.
She's got all the tools.
I know Ron could.
I'm hoping I'm not the building business. You know I will, though.
Big bash. Bash too big.
I can bet you this, it's gonna have to happen in warmer weather.
It's gonna be done by April sixteen.
No, we're not gonna have any of that then. Well, it's seven o'clock. It's time for the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen of the city of beautiful downtown Edina for the month of February. If you'll bear with me, we'll start with an invocation. Oh gracious heavenly father, we thank you for our nice little town on the hill here and all the fine people that make up that town. Please, we ask you to look over all the fine people of Edina and help lighten their burdens, whether they be mental or physical or financial. And please, if you would, look after the city employees as they go about the day-to-day operations of the city and please keep them safe, Lord. And also, if you would, look in on our elected and appointed officials and give them the courage and the wisdom and the perseverance to do things as you would have them done, Lord. We ask this in Christ's name, amen. Renee, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to signify that the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out on a illustrious winter's night tonight. Margaret, do we have minutes of prior meetings that we need to address?
Yes, January eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, the Board of Aldermen met in regular session with Mayor Strickler presiding. Alderman present, Renee Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Dot Krickser, Delmar Strange, absent none. Mayor Strickler called the meeting to order and gave the invocation. The pledge of allegiance was led by Renee Edwards. Minutes of the December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting were read and approved. The collector's report was given. Mayor Strickler announced that he would be appointing Ronnie Leckby with the board's approval to fill the unexpired term of the third ward alderman, Bill Alberti. Motion was made by Dot Krickser and seconded by Ron Stansberry to approve the mayor's appointment of Ronnie Leckby. Motion carried five to zero. At this time, Ronnie Leckby was sworn in by Margaret Gibson, city clerk, and he took his seat as a member of the board. The treasurer's report was reviewed by the board. Motion was made by Renee Edwards and seconded by Delmar Strange to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Mark Bros of Klingner and Associates met with the board and gave an update on the sewer project. He said both new rotors are in at the plant and the lining contractors should be working later this month. He said the issue near Fulton Street involves property lines and the surveyors will sort this out. Mark also reported that the additional Purcell Street Sewer Project will be bid as soon as all of the easements have been signed. Bros presented pay requests for the contractors and the following action was taken. Motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Renee Edwards to approve the Willis Brothers Pay Request Number Six in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine forty. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Renee Edwards and seconded by Delmar Strange to approve the Keokuk Contractor Pay Request Number Three in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Ron Stansberry to approve the Klingner and Associates Pay Request in the amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred and eleven twenty-one. Motion carried unanimously. Mark stated that the estimate of funds to be requested from USDA Rural Development is three hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three one. Motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Renee Edwards to approve the estimate of funds recommended by Mark Bros. Motion carried unanimously. Under department reports, Thai Parish Utility Supervisor met with the board. He said he will be able to chip and seal some streets in two thousand and sixteen with the funds that are budgeted, but needs the board to have a plan. They need to decide which streets need to be repaired this summer. Mike Wright, Superintendent of Utilities, met with the board. He reported that the average flow for December was four hundred and fifty-eight thousand gallons per day, which calculates out to two hundred and five percent of the design flow. He also said that the flow meter for sludge quit working and he was unable to get parts since it is considered obsolete. Dirk and Equipment Company has been contacted and will provide an estimate for a new sludge meter. Kelly Hayes, Chief of Police, met with the board. He informed the board that the quote from Love Green Ford, Kirksville, Missouri, for a two thousand and sixteen Ram fifteen-hundred SSV crew cab, four by four, was twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. This is the state bid and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars has been allowed for the trade of the city's two thousand and seven Chevrolet Impala. Therefore, the cost to the city would be twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Ron Stansberry to approve the purchase of a two thousand and sixteen Dodge from Love Green Ford in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. There was a tie vote. Eyes, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Dot Krickser. Nays, Renee Edwards, Delmar Strange, and Ronnie Leckby. Mayor Strickler broke the tie by voting aye to purchase the new truck for the police department. Under unfinished business, Mayor Strickler reported that the salary committee met, but there was nothing to report at this time. And there was no new business. Motion was made by Renee Edwards and seconded by Rick Winter to adjourn. Motion carried and meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Margaret. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, we'll just consider the minutes approved by consensus. We'll go on to collector's report.
Evening.
The collections for January two thousand and sixteen, water total, twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Sewer total, twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents. Sanitation total, thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents. General fund total, nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Recreation total, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Street total, one thousand, thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Special lights total, four hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents. Meter deposit total, four hundred and fifty dollars. Reserve and improvement fund total, three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. For a grand total collected, seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Are there any questions or comments about the collection? Does our shut-off list or demarcency?
I had three on the list this time. One of them was out of town and called. One of them had already moved and the other one's been unpaid since.
Well, good. Good, good, good. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Treasurer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm missing you. One thing changed.
Yes.
Seems odd to see you across the table.
I'm close by.
Figure it's more balanced this way.
Well, you're right. Yeah.
Well, you're so unorthodox on both sides.
I can't say that down.
What?
I can't say that about this one.
The gentleman, we're all very quiet on that comment. Okay, as far as the treasurer's report goes, everything is right on target. We have nothing in the block this month, which is all just a bit late. Any questions on the report?
Looks pretty straightforward. Something that you might be interested in, Clarence Cannon. They've got some money on CDs. I can't remember, I don't have the exact dollar figure in front, but they just renewed, and it doesn't say the term either, but they were able to renew CDs at the Alliance Bank, one point zero one percent. Doesn't seem like that long ago we were getting five and seven of it, something that we put in for. Apparently, it's been long enough ago.
Yeah, we thought it was probably one point two percent.
Yeah.
As far as, you know, the city's funds are, you know, we've got healthy balances where we're at. I was kind of reviewing where we ended up at the end of the year and where that puts us as far as projections, and I would be glad to share that information if you wanted.
Well, if you happen to have it.
Well, I'll just pass them around then. So, this is where our balances were as of January first, two thousand and sixteen. So you see, our total government funds were nine hundred and five, nine sixty-eight. Almost half of that was in the general fund, so, just so you kind of see where that's at.
I'm going across on the first line.
Correct, the very first line. That's where we actually, actual balances that we ended up with at the end of the year. The yellow line is kind of where that will leave us projected for the end of the year. So if we look at the general fund, our general fund has been just almost break even every year. But we're starting to support the special light fund, so it's gonna be, looks like you'll probably go in the make next year. The street fund is showing a loss for next year, projecting a loss, and that is with the seventy-five thousand dollars being spent on street materials. We've gone years now without, I was not here last month. I agree with, I assume that was Thai, saying we're gonna need a plan this year. Oil prices are down. Hopefully, that would be a positive thing and we could do more. But, you know, as a council, I would kind of like to see a plan and a direction and this is what we're gonna do. Even if we have to set up, okay, this is what we're gonna do this year and what we can do each year in the future. Because in that fund, we probably have about forty thousand dollars a year that could be used material-wise. And then we need to consider what our other options are to get our streets back where we need them, so.
Well, I just had thought, I don't know if anybody checked into oil prices. Is it something we could buy pre-buy ahead of time while oil prices are down so much? Is that an option?
I don't know.
Have you checked oil prices yet?
I've never called back from oil off ones on it, but I could call me and see.
The transport load?
I wouldn't want to. We might better, maybe if we could prepay and buy some, but I don't really want to store any down here yet.
No, no, I don't want to store.
Right, but.
Check some prices.
Yeah, and like I said, it's one of those deals where it's gonna be kind of what it's gonna be anyway. We're just gonna go as far as our money's gonna let us go. I mean, the amount of streets you do is gonna be endless. I mean, really, so.
Well, the last time we did some major things, we transferred two hundred thousand dollars from another fund and it was gone.
Right, right.
So, it's not gonna all happen at once.
No, that's what I mean. That's, we were talking about initially how much we could do or how many blocks it's, I mean, let's say, you, it's endless on how far you could go, so it's just gonna be one of those, kind of pick priority and, you know, go as far as the money will take you. It's kind of the way I was looking at it. I mean, we're gonna go with what we can go with.
Okay. Recreation fund is normally just break even or we don't have enough and we have to pull from the general fund. Our special light fund, it's showing like we have a profit, but that's because we transferred ten, we're planning on transferring ten thousand dollars in from the general fund because we're not having enough. And you'll see that was the one fund we had a problem with this month. We have eighteen hundred come in and twenty-five hundred go out, so every month we're going in the hole in that fund. So you have any questions as you look at just the governmental fund side of things that you want to ask or clarified or? Except for the fact that we're gonna hopefully do something with the street fund this year. We're kind of break even on every single fund. And the problem is, we don't have more revenues that can come into any of those funds. Okay, no questions. The proprietary funds are the ones that are supposed to support themselves and that would be the goal. The numbers are kind of skewed this year because of the project that's going on. When I looked at where we actually ended up for the year in the water and sewer fund. It looked like we had a two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar profit, but a hundred and ninety-six thousand of that was money coming in from USDA that was loans that we spent in previous years. So that got to the net of about seventy-one, six oh four. Our bond payments this year are anticipated to be a hundred and forty-three, six thirty-three. So we're gonna be a lot closer than I'd like to be. Fortunately, our funds are solid at this point. So we have a little bit of leeway if the equipment goes haywire and things goes on now. But I know for the long-term picture, USDA will not allow us to be running. So it's gonna be a lot tighter than when I had anticipated, when I got looking at figures. So when you're looking at the loss of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, realistically, that's because we have capital outlay planned and set aside for the one project that didn't appear to be included in the other project. So it's more of a break even type situation than what we're really seeing in that picture. The water and sewer depreciation replacement fund, we can't spend that, so it's just there for thirty-five years and we'll have to continue to grow. Same thing on the bond reserve fund. So that hundred and fifty-two thousand that's in there is basically gonna be sitting drawing interest for thirty-five years. So that's really not money that can be spent.
But that is fully funded?
It is fully funded, yes.
Well, that's good.
It is, it's very good. Now, like I said, you know, overall, the city is solid. Sanitation fund is doing well. We're making a profit on a regular basis, which is the goal we set aside initially because that way when we need equipment, you know, we're building it up so that we can do it and then the funds go down and we start building back up. So it's doing just exactly what we wanted to.
Good.
So, just an overview, kind of see where we're at and where we're headed.
Well, thank you for that.
Okay, well, let you move on unless you have questions.
Any questions?
Thanks, thank you.
Well, what's our next item here? Item seven, the monthly bills. I'll say you, anybody think, have an opinion on the monthly bills?
I saw those piles here. Is that, was that all?
So?
You seen any extraordinary in there?
I didn't get this one.
No, I didn't get a look at it. I was right next to it. I just went out there.
I guess not. Well, we'll take a, take a couple of minutes here while we look over the bills. Just one vote? Yes.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Stansberry. Thank you, Mr. Strange. Well, any further discussion? There's no further discussion. All those in favor of paying the bills, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam Clerk, I can see six ayes, no nays, and no abstentions. Let the city's good credit rating be preserved. Excuse me. Item eight, citizens' comments. Anybody have comments?
I do. On February twentieth, it's a Saturday, from ten a.m. to two p.m., the Knox County Local Emergency Planning Committee is hosting our annual tabletop exercise. Which is basically, we come up with different scenarios, ways for all hell to break loose. And sit around and talk about different resources we have available to be able to deal with it. So last year was, I think it was a giant snowstorm, wasn't it? It was with power outages and water, you know, frozen water mains and I think we did a couple area evacuations and we had a huge hazmat spill probably around Bering. Maybe some sort of train derailment. So ideally, we would have a representative from every municipality, you know, besides just police, fire, medical. So if you guys could send someone, we would love that. Saturday the twentieth, from ten a.m. to two p.m., Pam Osness is making our homemade cinnamon rolls for breakfast and a really scrumptious lunch for dinner. So, at the Knights of Columbus Hall.
She's a very good cook, so.
Can't think of anything else.
Any other citizens' comments?
Yes, sir. I'm here from BFW, and last meeting when the boardmaster paid the pickup deal on the trash and everything, we had closed the bar. And he was under the understanding that the city would still be charging us twenty-six dollars a month for trash pickup. And only, won't be no trash. We have a meeting once a month is the only thing that we're doing there now. I wonder if we could have maybe done something with or? It's my understanding that the American Legion and some of them don't pay anything.
Churches, we don't charge. When they were actually.
A commercial venture, well, that's one thing.
Right.
Well, I know.
And we, we went with the, you know, we went, you know, standard mandatory, you know, if you have a water meter, you pay for trash, but that is a good point. We don't charge churches for trash.
We try to do a little bit for the community. We feature scholarships at the high school and everything for non-for-profit. If you like, then maybe we should be considered as such as our arrangement.
Well, I for one appreciate the sacrifices made on our behalf by the veterans who served their time and. Chair, would you entertain a vote to change the status of the trash at the BFW since they're no longer a commercial business? That's why we were charging them a commercial rate is basically because they had a business down there which they no longer have.
Yeah, they actually had dumpsters when they were.
Yeah, I don't know. Y'all picked up the dumpster and nobody told us and y'all went ahead and picked up the dumpster.
Okay.
And nobody said anything about it. They just picked it up.
But we were told to.
Who was told? Who told you?
Sharon.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Well, I make a motion that we don't charge them the twenty-six dollars. They're not open for business and I don't think that's sharing. I don't think it's personally fair.
I'll second it. Thank you, Mr. Strange. Thank you, Mr. Leckby. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Did a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you guys very much. Well, if there's no other citizens' comments, and if anybody thinks of a comment, we can always come back and reopen that. We try to let everybody have their say here in beautiful downtown Edina. Is there a Mark Bros present this year? Klingner and Associates?
No, we haven't.
Whatever. Better than the mailman.
Okay, just kind of an update on where we're at. Not a lot of activity for the last month or so. They're done laying pipeline in town. Finished up dealing with the pipe that goes through the bore under the highway fifteen there north of town. Got that straightened out a little better than what it was. The case of pipe that's bent and. and it was quite an ordeal for three or four days to straighten that out as good as we could get it, so. Kiakut Contractors has the screen installed down there, uh, still have to hook the water service up to it.
Down at the plant?
Down at the plant, and, uh, uh, the controls are ready to be started up. I believe we're gonna do that on the sixteenth, which is next Tuesday. So, uh, things are, things are moving along there. We've, uh, got a few things to, to go over, oh, one other thing I wanted to update, um, the manholes. Been a few issues with some of the manholes on highway fifteen. They have an adjustable ring, which is something that the contractor proposed and indicated they'd had good success with, but apparently it's not, not great success, but they, uh, the adjustable ring has worked its way out in a couple instances, and caused problems with some of the lids, uh, coming out and things like that. They're due back here tomorrow, I think they're supposed to be here around one o'clock tomorrow in the afternoon. And they're going to address those issues first on highway fifteen, correct those issues to the way they're supposed to be, the way we originally called for it. And then, uh, they got a, a few other issues they need to correct, and then we start lining, process the manhole lining, process, so.
I think at least one of those is on, on, on...
Six.
Yeah, on highway six.
Yeah.
By Jamie.
Jamie Nichols is...
Yeah, there's, there's been a few of those, so. One of them, I think the ring ended up about a block and a half away from the manhole, so. So, anyway, we've been through that, uh, I have to admit, they haven't been the easiest group to deal with, but I think, at least right now, they're coming back to address the issues, so. Generally, in those cases, I hold money until I get it to the way it's supposed to be, so, yeah, that's pretty good incentive, so. We'll get a, we'll get them taken care of, so. I don't know if you have any other general questions about that before we go through the pay requests and all that stuff, but...
How's West of Town going?
That, we've got the line established, and the sewer main is right on the line. And, uh, that's what my fear was, and, uh, so, we know, we're, we're gonna have to have, if it's gonna happen, we're gonna have to have an easement from, uh, just the one to the south, because there's not really enough room to go to the north of that line. The problem with it is, is the guy to the south, his sewer service goes out to the street and not out to this line. And so, it would be him giving an easement for his neighbors, two of his neighbors, to have their line back there. So, I've got his contact information, and I'll be talking to him about that. I don't want to spend a significant amount of time until we know whether he's even available for doing anything. And so, that's what we'll be doing, but we did get that identified, and if you look at it down through there, knowing where the existing line is, there's just not enough room to do what you need to do on our side, you'd be too close to buildings and other things there. So, I don't, I don't have any at this time, I don't have any notion of what direction we're going with that yet, until we talk to him, so. I got his in-contact info Friday, so. That's, that's where that one is at. I believe Mr. Devaney, so we, we had some over there in Monticello and East where we had to do a location relocation because of the ditch, and Mr. Devaney has those, those documents for easements on that, I think there's one or two that we've got to get there, so. My understanding, that's not a big deal, so. Any other questions? Uh, we've got pay request number seven from Willis Brothers for forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Well, the chair would entertain a motion to pay Willis Brothers.
I mean, who was the pay Willis Brothers?
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Thank you, Mr. Strange. Uh, any discussion? Since there's no discussion, all those in favor of paying Willis Brothers, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, I count six eyes, no nays and no abstentions. Pay Willis Brothers.
Okay. Just so you know, we're, we're underrunning on their contract in terms of sewer main length, and a little over on some of the manhole footage, but it's, it's more, more than offset by the sewer main footage that they have, but it's, we're, we're in good shape on that.
Not going to.
Uh, and they're done digging, so, they just don't have concrete, street work left to do when the weather straightens out, but... We have Kiakut Contractors pay request number four for one hundred and point six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents. Bring to you with approval.
That's all worked in at the sewer plant.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Stansberry.
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, for that second.
This is the one you'd be holding, though?
No, that, this is not one we hold. Uh, the other group is the one we would hold, but they haven't done any work in answer to any pay requests, and...
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of paying Kiakut Contractors, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. And clerk, I count six eyes, no nays, no abstentions.
Okay, we did, uh, need to make a slight modification down at the wastewater plant to the channel that the screens in. When they took that, uh, if you know anything about it, the old channel had a grit, what's called a grit classifier, and it was on one end of the channel, and there was an auger that's laid horizontally in that old channel that would take that grit and take it to the classifier, then it would raise up and then dump out into a dumpster or something. They hadn't worked it in years. Periodically, you'd have those channels overflow down there because of excess flow coming into the wastewater plant, and so sewage water would go into, to the old channel, which was not in use because we had it blocked off. And it would settle in there and drop its grit load and solids load, and basically just get packed in and silted in, and... And they had to spend quite a little bit of extra time digging, digging the stuff out by hand and other things to get that old junk and garbage and sludge and everything out of there. And when we get down there, we noticed that the channel's not quite the same elevation as what the original drawings indicated on the old plant, and so we had to make a modification to bring that back up just a little bit, so that it was the same elevation as the channel that you, uh, your old bypass channel, or your channel that you're using now, before we put the screen in it. There's two channels, there's one that you were using, and then there was a bypass one, we're putting the new screen in the bypass one, turning the old one into the bypass channel, if that makes any sense, so. That way, we can maintain operations, but, so they had to put a little extra concrete in there to do that, and so, uh, uh, there was about two, two thousand dollars worth of concrete work, and about two thousand dollars worth of sludge work down there, to get all that out of there, but, uh, the other thing is, is that when you come into that plant, there is one screen ahead of both channels. And it's problematic that we don't, we don't want a screen, the whole purpose is to get rid of that screen, so. You know, I draw you a picture of the way this thing works, is you come in like this, and then there's two channels. Well, we're gonna put our new screen here. Coming in here, this is where your screen is now. This is where your new mechanical screen goes. You came in right here, this was blocked off, flow goes this way, and then this was a, a bypass channel. Well, now, you come through, this is blocked off, you go through our new screen, and then, we don't want to screen before we screen, the whole purpose is to not have to do a better job, we, we need to do a better job screening, which we will with mechanical screen, but we don't want to have to clean this screen in front of that screen, if that makes any sense, okay? That, that screen that's there now is pointless. So, we need to get that out of there, uh, and we need to put one on the bypass channel that we're gonna have. And so, uh, that thing is anchored into there, and it'll have to be cut and ground down a little bit, that's gonna be a little bit difficult, but, um, we can do, you know, to get the old one out. But to put the new one in, we can do that in dry, because we can block off that channel. But we need to replace that screen. And Mike, I think, you know, I agree with him, that, that needs to be done, and we put a, a new aluminum one in down there that wouldn't corrode or anything else, so. All of that being said, that, the pricing came back on that at about ninety-eight hundred and eighteen dollars, and Mike and I feel like it's a good use of the funds, especially if we're underrunning on the other, the other contract, and that solves those problems down there, takes care of it, and so, I had Kiakut Contractors submit a change order for that, change order one for ninety-eight hundred and eighteen dollars, so. And there's a four thousand on top of that.
No, that counts, that includes all that.
Oh, it's all of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all of it.
That's better.
Yeah.
Well, the chair would entertain a motion to approve change order one in the amount of ninety-eight hundred?
Ninety-eight eighteen.
Ninety-eight eighteen. Excuse me. Well, thank you, Mr. Strange, is that a second, Mr. Stansberry? Thank you very much.
That plan has to work.
Yes. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of change order number one, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, I count six eyes, no nays, no abstentions. More pay orders?
Yeah, we have the Clijner bill of eleven thousand, eight forty-three fifty-eight, which is for the inspection, and then some paperwork associated with pay requests and change order and that type of stuff, administration piece. I should get it considered this evening.
Make a motion to pick Clijner's.
Thank you very much, young lady, I mean, Ms. Edwards.
One second.
Well, I thank you, Ms. Crickser. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your, raise your hand, all those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, I count six eyes, no nays, no abstentions.
Okay, and the last thing is, is we need to order the funds to pay those bills less from USDA, and so that total is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. I should get it considered for a question.
Mr. Stansberry, has that a motion to request those funds from FDA?
Motion so made.
USDA, there you go, from somebody. Mr. Winter, thank you for the second. Yeah, that would be nice. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, uh, raise your hand, all those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, I count six eyes, no nays and no abstentions.
Okay, and the last, last item is the Purcell Street update. Mr. Devaney has easements drafted for all of, for the Hayes, the Trout, and the Farm Shop properties. I don't believe Mr., uh, Mayor Strickler has talked to Hayes or Trout yet, but, uh, the, uh, the Farm Shop property and, and talking with them, uh, there's, they asked that we flag where we put the lift station, which we did, we did that last week. I haven't heard any more update, if there was any concern with that or not, but one of the issues that, that has been brought up, has been a discussion in the past, apparently, and it has to do with the water service that feeds the Farm Shop. It will freeze periodically because it goes over the top of the culvert, uh, that, that ditch goes through there. It didn't used to be a problem until county or somebody went in and replaced that culvert and made that water line a lot closer to the air now than it used to be. You can correct me if I'm wrong on any of that, Mr. Mayor, but...
I'm listening.
That's, that's my understanding of it, and, and I know that, uh, that was a discussion with, with Allen Ives when we were here looking at this initially, and, uh, uh, I think really the crux of the issue is, is they want some type of, something in writing that would state that the, the city will address that water service and allow them to also to hook to the sewer down there as we go through there, so. Uh, those are really the two issues, is the condition of signing their easement. You know, back when you used to do your own construction, some of your own construction, when Mr. Ives was here, that wouldn't have been such a big deal, but, uh, you guys don't do a lot of your own construction with the utility anymore, you have to do repairs, but you're not extending water mains and things like that. That service can be relocated, probably to the upstream side of that culvert or the west side of the street, and take it down, down along the embankment, and then around the end of the culvert, and then back up, bury it sufficient depth, but the freezing problem's not an issue anymore. But I don't know if you guys are set up to do that or not, so. I guess what I'm here to figure out is how you guys want to address that, because that's really the crux of their concern, they want to get that water service to dry. And I'm not sure if some promises maybe were made in the past to do that.
Well, what I was told...
Did you make that repair?
What I was told in the past before, you know, when Allen was still alive, when, you know, he came out and talked to Jim and Allen about that, I just left the room and went back to selling parts and let, left it up to Allen, I didn't feel like I really even needed a seat at the table in that respect. You know, and I'm kind of caught in the middle, where I'm an employee of, of one and such and so forth, so I just kind of stayed out of it, and, you know. Told Allen, whatever we need to do, we ought to do, and of course, we could do that stuff pretty easy at that point, so. I wasn't in the room, but my impression was that those promises were, were made, and and those guys apparently still remember that.
That would be a good time to fix it, when they work on that lift station down there, wouldn't it?
Well, that's what we're thinking, this would be the...
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna have the equipment there, I think.
Give a bid on what it cost to...
I just said he can do that, didn't you?
We can do it, I mean, ours will be in the backhoe, I mean, I don't...
That's all you need, was that.
It's just gonna be hook onto the road and digging around the side, and then rehooking it.
Or we include it in the project, uh, since...
Well, if we can do it, that would be, I would say quite a bit, quite a bit cheaper than having to do the darn thing else. That, that would give us them.
What kind of timeframe do you think, though, to be able to do it, if they're needing something, you know?
It won't take very long to do it, I mean, worst part is the back.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, though, in the agreement, they'll probably want a deadline on it.
Yeah, I mean, what kind of, yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, it, it'll be spring, naturally, when the weather shifts, I mean. I don't foresee it taking a lot of time.
Would you say like ju- by July first or something like that?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I think that we could probably go back with them with something along those lines, say, yeah, okay, well, we'll relocate that service line, that portion of the service line by July first, and...
Well, I think they'll be perfectly fine with that.
And, you know, of course, if they want to connect to the sewer, that's not an issue either. We have the lift station right there, they have to go through the proper processes with that.
Will it be an issue through the county, Knox County Water District?
With what?
But that's it, with the sewer over there, getting permission from them?
No, the sewer's got nothing to do with them.
Because they gave us the ones we still had when they did the school and the nursing homes.
But they don't, yeah, the sewer's totally different.
The sewer, Gary, I talked to Gary Mallett one day, and he said, go forward and prosper.
Yeah.
Sewer makes them no profit anyway, they're...
Uh, they don't have any available facilities in one area anymore, so.
But that's part of, part of why the water line's such a deal, is because they're a little sour on the deal of, see, there's a county water line right there. See, there's a county water line right there.
Right.
And, you know, from their standpoint, it'd be just as easy to hook in to county water as have to reroute their city water. But with the agreement we have with the county, that'd be like them stealing another customer from us.
So, you know, you know, you probably oughta vote on this, but what I'm hearing is, is that we would, you guys would be okay, potentially okay, with the city relocating a portion of the water service, I know later than July first, and then, you know, it's, I guess it's city's expense. And then, there's nothing that would preclude them from hooking into the sewer over there, should they wanna do that at some point in time for some purpose. Following the normal protocol you guys have for hooking up, paying the appropriate fees and all that, so. Is that kind of the gist of what, what I'm hearing? I do think it's something you oughta vote on, is Mr. Devaney.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stansberry. Is there any further discussion on that, or we kick that dog hard enough off and then up?
The only thing I'll say is, I'll have to talk to Mr. Devaney, whether he wants to push, just write that into the easement, or if he wants a separate agreement. It could be done either way.
I know, I was thinking we just put something on our stationary, but the...
Maybe you could do that too, then. Maybe that's acceptable.
Would you rather?
I don't know, I'm not...
You're gonna have it on Devaney's stationary?
He might tell us we should have a real efficient...
I think that's what he will do.
Yeah.
It was a little general drift I've got from him, is that...
Since that's why we hired attorneys to keep us out of trouble.
On the sewer side, I'd make sure, you know, who's talking about who's gonna pay for what, cause I'm pretty sure that they're wanting to give the easement with the fact that we're gonna allow them, we're gonna give them this, hook their sewer up, basically. It's kinda what general drift I got from it, but that'd be at the city's call.
The way I remember talking to Allen.
So it's a little different than what we talked...
Right, it'll be city's expense.
If I was inarticulate, I apologize if I didn't quite...
Well, we would make, we would allow the, we would allow the hookup. What do you do, waive the fee? Who does the hookup? Does the city dig the hookup in?
My service lines are up to the owner, homeowner, customer.
Normally.
And there's no fee to town?
Normally, you're not asking for an easement.
But I just wanna make sure that we're not offering to build a complete service line for them all the way to their building, wherever that, whichever route it would be. Is that what their expectation is?
Well, now I'm not absolutely certain about that.
Cause if there's no fee and their contractor ties into the sewer, then it's really not an issue. There's no cost involved. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna tie into the sewer, so. It's just a question, I guess.
I don't know that's ever been discussed officially on that, but just the drift I got from was that we were gonna give them sewer to that. So I, I don't... I don't, I don't know if they were expecting any cost out of it. They were given the easement in exchange for getting their water service fixed, which had nothing to do with the sewer project. That was a prior deal. And then allowing them to hook sewer in.
I don't think there's an issue allowing them to let the sewer go in.
Right, but I don't know if they're expecting any expense out of it, if, you know.
They're not expecting us to give them free sewer too, are they?
No, that's...
Well, I don't think so, but...
We can't do that.
Yeah.
Maybe a little more clarification. Whether we're hooking their lines up, or they're hooking it up themselves, is the thing.
If they'll hook it up themselves, there is no...
There's no problem.
There's no tax cost.
Right.
So that's a...
Maybe we allow them to hook up the sewer?
Yeah, allow them.
Word at that one.
Because we're going to relocate their water service in the Farm Shop.
Yeah, the water service, if it's freezing, we'll be fixing that anyway.
Because technically, we're allowing them to keep the city sewer up. The county's gonna change it back into city.
Well, it's all, the whole water line was kind of a...
Do what?
Good luck with that.
Right, it really is.
But we are making sewer available to that property. I know the cost of that.
Send them the bill.
Whereas they don't have it anymore currently.
And the whole water line was a whole mixed up deal anyway.
Hopefully a win-win deal.
Cause Alan Dixon even said that, you know, when they had the property, at the time, there was no trailer still there. They had no intentions of running water there, so they told the county just to put it back like it was. They had the opportunity to probably relocate the time, cause technically, it's just a service. Main stops up on the hill, it's just a single service that runs there, so there you go again.
Well, anyway, we've got a motion on the floor. That we'll take, we'll fix the water service and, and we'll get the easement and allow them to hook onto the sewer. And the deal's been flagged, so they can see exactly where it's gonna be.
That's real close. It's close. Josh and I taped it, I mean, that's, that's real close, but...
The issue's hopefully take care of them, so.
Ronnie made the motion and Ron, second.
Any further discussion? There's no further discussion. All those favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam Clerk, six eyes, no nays, no extensions.
Do you want me to contact Mr. Devaney here? Is there something you wanna contact him about? How, how do you want, who do you want to...
Would you? Could you?
I, I have a problem doing that.
Okay, super.
I was just gonna send him a note, copy, mark it on it, so you're aware of what correspondence allows.
Okay.
Then he, and I'll ask him, I mean, do you wanna amend the easement document, or do you wanna separate agreement? You decide and get us the paperwork. And we'll get signatures and go on down the road.
Super. Good work, Mr. Bros.
Are you any other questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You'll have to carefully, young man.
Alright, yeah, I will.
Department reports. Mr. Parrish.
We didn't have our first smell in here. Making things, I guess, one of you guys, you know, but I thought it went well.
Yeah.
We are getting ready to make a fairly substantial tube order. We're piling up some tubes to get put in this spring. Metal's about an all-time low right now, so it's a good time to probably stock up on some. Other than that, we did a little work to the trash truck this month. Replaced the cable on top. Uh, we've had to weld a few things. It's broke on it, so. On that note, one thing to keep in mind is next year might be original plan. That'd be our five years since we've had that already. So it might be in the works for next year to think about a new one again, which, like I said, starting to just get a few of those nitpicky things are wearing out. Other than that... Don't have a whole lot.
Well, good. I hope the snow stays to the east and north of us. We've dodged a lot of bullets so far.
Right.
They said the streets were slick in Quincy this morning.
Head to wreck down there.
A UPS truck, what was that?
Oh, no. I'm glad, what are UPS trucks?
Box man, Fred says.
Oh.
Yeah, he's always bringing a box. Anything else for Mr. Ty?
Yeah, uh, I didn't, I know the weather's not real good right now, but next time we catch a few good days, could you, uh, have the crew to go around and put the B-six X in some of these holes?
Yeah, we started on some of those.
I seen you had up there on Broadway.
Pride.
But I, I know that stuff don't last long, boy, sure does swing for a while.
Yeah. Yeah, we've tried to work on some of those. I know there's some down by Wilson Street, which, I don't know, do, we can do down there, but it's pretty bad. Yeah, we've started working on some of that and we can, but they'll, like I said, I don't know if it'll stay, but it's cheaper than...
Some of the places is where they've done some shared work.
Yeah, and I, I think Danny, um... Josh was telling me Danny was talking about being up here in the next month or so to finish up, like what he did at Fourth Street by the community center and all that, to recon, to start concreting a lot of that. Start cleaning up some, uh, services and things like that where they've got dirt work to do. So that'll help on some of that, but...
Depending on the frost.
Yeah. I know that was his plan, start kind of cleaning up, finishing up concrete work.
Any other questions for Mr. Parrish?
On the streets, we were talking about chipping and sealing and stuff. Is there, instead of doing all chip and seal, is, can we do like, uh, like a set of streets, you know? And then, like every year, try to do a set of streets?
That's what I say. Need to just come up with a plan.
Yeah.
I'm just, my thinking on it this year, we, we haven't paved the street in four years. We haven't done anything with them in four years. Um, my thinking, seventy-five thousand's not gonna go very far.
No.
I mean, my thinking is, we, we can pave some if you want, um, but it's gonna eat up so much of material that you're, you're just talking a few midly blocks. Whereas if we could do a significant amount of chip and seal to the good roads we've got, to try and salvage them while we can, then you can look into next year, maybe we can start doing a decent piece of paving, you know, so I, that's what I say. I, I wanna plan for it because I get dinged about it all the time. So, you know, drive around, check what streets you want, try and make a priority list of what you think needs to be go, um...
But in the near future, if we can start doing like five or so streets a year?
That's what I say. I'd like to have a plan, so we know. And it's all gonna vary, you know, like I said, a lot of these spots like Don, we're talking about the bad spots. We're gonna have to, when you go start paving them, you're gonna have to go in and fill those holes first and level the street back up. So you're basically gonna give a, a light pave to start with before you can actually come on top and actually pave them. So I mean, it's, it's gonna get pretty costly pretty quick.
Yeah.
But that's why I wanna get, everybody just kinda get a plan, start thinking about it down.
You'll have to do that on the chip and seal them too, though, right?
In, in essence, part of them we might, um, but like I said, the chip and seal, I'm more looking at like the good streets. You know, a lot of the west side of town was the last streets we'd paved, and a lot of those out there aren't that bad. We go through and chip and seal a lot of them. I know s- a lot of people around town aren't gonna like the fact of, hey, you know, why are you doing those streets? They're fine, but you're gonna have to do something to the good streets. We got to save them, cause if you start working on all the bad ones, then they're gonna be in the same situation real quick. There's certain parts of town I won't be surprised when we'll lose part of them. They're gonna be gravel for a while until we get caught up, but I don't know what else you do with them. So.
So, what about from the community center, cross east of Jeff Dosse's? Is that something needs to be done before they do their concrete work to save anything? In the concrete, you know, we talked that you all met with, drainage problem?
Yeah, but we weren't gonna dig up across there, nothing. We were just talking about changing the size of the tube there at the community center.
Community center only?
That's what the plan was, I think, was to change the size of the tube.
I just thought there needed to be digging, it needs to be done before they do concrete work.
Yeah, well, part of that's just gonna be periodic here and there anyway, you know, I mean, as far as tube replacement, things like that, but, yeah, I don't, that's all new tube underneath the road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Uh, oh, excuse me. I visited with Mr. Wright earlier today and told you that he would not be able to attend. But he said, other than, you know, what Mr. Bros had to say about the plant down there, that that was about the only thing that he had for his report anyway. So I said, "That's fine, we'll just shorten the meeting that much."
He didn't know anything else?
No, so if, if anybody has any questions, we can get him on the speaker phone or call him up or, or whatever. Brings us to the chief of police.
Alright. Well, I don't have much either. Kind of been kind of a quick month, haven't seen that time time.
It seems that way.
It seems a bit easier.
Yeah.
Things are going fine.
Well, if it'll stay cold, then keep the criminals at home, wouldn't it?
Traditionally, we've been kind of busy here criminal-wise, like...
Well, it hasn't been cold yet, though.
So, yeah, it's now getting cold. The, uh, truck's ordered. Six to eight weeks before it will be here.
Which means thirteen.
Yeah, it was thirteen last time they told us that, so, yeah, it's many, I think, before we got it last time, so. But, uh, well, everything else is going good. Don't have anything going on unless you get snowed something. Be gearing up for cleanup before too long, so. I'll be coming up, probably next month, we'll start on that and get ready for April.
Ready.
What did we decide last?
Type of year.
We had a time limit, rid off the streets.
Get the lift leaves, let the sun start looking a little better.
To get the, the black grid off the streets by a certain time?
You mean the cinders?
Sand and cinders?
I thought we talked about that this spring.
Well, I think last, there was a color run or something that was in April. April or May, so, yeah, that we tried to have swept.
I'll have to look at my notes. I know there was something about that.
Yeah.
Dates at or something.
But it's, yes, since we're only, what they, Groundhog Day is supposed to be halfway through, just a week past Groundhog Day, we got...
Getting closer every day.
We may be adding more cinders before we have to worry about sweeping.
I just wondered if anybody remembered what day we got...
No.
Nope.
Anything else?
Nope.
Wanna quit snowing?
That's right. Rain starts, it helps.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Nothing really to report from Clarence Cannon Wholesale. Things are going fairly smoothly down there. If anybody wants to go down, do you remember who our alternate is?
So, who's Mike? Who's Mike? Ty, you're not the alternate, are you, for Clarence Cannon?
Did Mike up that on Rick when he went here? Solid waste.
Oh, that's all he's done.
Ron might be the one.
Is it?
I'm thinking Mike, but I'm not sure.
Now, wait a minute, let's make sure before we start appointing him.
I'm gonna have to, I'll just call down there and ask what their records show. Todd's got his records.
I've probably got a record here somewhere. I recall this around and can't read it.
Uh, any unfinished business? Any new business? Yes. Application for a building permit. We always like new construction. We have a force tonight, uh, application for a building permit for Teresa Carhog, Mason, and five oh six East Marion. She'd like to build a garage slash workshop, a pole barn style, twenty by twenty-four by ten foot, with metal roof and sides, wood frame, concrete floor. Contractor says sell. Uh, estimated date of completion, oh four sixteen. And usually she keeps her place looking pretty nice. I'm sure this building would look, uh... I'm sure it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood. Chair would ask for a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Strange.
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those disagree, raise your hand. And all those abstaining, raise your hand. Madam Clerk, I count five eyes, no nays, and one of extensions, Mr. Stansberry. Madam Clerk, I count five eyes, no nays, and one extension. Mr. Stansberry feels that he's related.
He's in trouble.
Yeah.
I'm really thinking he's a self.
That he is self?
I think all's a lot of names, but just maybe one, a few times have been called an, an extension.
Act like yourself.
Alderman's comments.
Did you have something? Did you have something there?
There's a motion to adjourn.
Nothing?
I'll second.
Oh, there's a second. All those in favor of adjourned, raise your hand. All those same sign, all those staying same sign. Motion adjourned. Did you read about the town in Texas where they arrested the?
I'm likely to get them by the end of the month.
Well, I guess not the wholesale council. They arrested the mayor and all the city council people that sent them on. This is down in South Texas.
As it gets closer to that.
And I guess they got an illegal gambling.
Does that sound doable?
Oh, yeah.